Good evening. Like to welcome everybody to the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you for attending tonight. Good to see everybody. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Doctor Officer Estes that's here with us this evening, if he will offer invocation for us, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Please.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, as we bow tonight, we reach out to you. Father, we are touched by so many victims in our land, victims of hurricane, tornadoes, flooding, and the most recent victims in Las Vegas. Lord, evil is present around us, and evil is here in our country and in our land. We pray for protection. We pray for your guidance and direction. We pray for comfort for those who are suffering tonight, many suffering the passing of their loved ones, and many suffering from injuries. So we reach out to you, Lord. You're the great physician, and pray thy hand of blessing be upon those dear people. Be with us tonight. Thank you for our commissioners and leaders all gathered here tonight. Protect us, Lord. And dear Father, give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to do what you want done, make according to your will. Guide us and direct us tonight. Protect us, Lord, and protect our families. Help us. Bless all of those in the military and first responders. Be with them and protect them, because instead of running away, they run too. Guide and direct us now, we pray, and let thy will prevail in this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. At this time, are there any additional agenda items? Okay. Is there a motion for the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as stated.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Approval of consent agenda.
Chairman, my pleasure. We approve the last agenda, consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move into our public hearing, and that'll be on page forty-one of your agenda, to consider the 2019 Community Transportation Program grant application. Ms. Davidson, good evening.
Good evening. I am bringing for public comments tonight before you the fiscal year 2019. We're getting ahead of ourselves, but that's the way these go. But the 2019 grant proposal for the Community Transportation Program, and it's the grant application that provides partial administrative funding, and the amount our allocation for the coming fiscal year is $191,011. The local match is fifteen percent, $28,652. This covers part of the salaries for the administrative staff, eighty-five reimbursement for the vehicle insurance of eighteen vehicles, as well as some technology supplies, office supplies, other things that are administrative. Then we are requesting $313,056 with a local match of ten percent, which is $31,306, to replace up to five vehicles. One of those is the four-station, twenty-five-foot LTV. When the mileage reaches $115,000 on those high-top conversion vehicles, they're eligible for replacement, and the LTVs, $145,000, they're eligible. It's changed this year. One difference is, up until this year, whatever the mileage was on October one, we requested the replacement and then had to run the vehicle up to the mileage. They have changed that, and three of these vehicles actually haven't reached the replacement value, but as they are there, which looks like they're going to be as of the date that we'll order, which is about a year from now, then we'll be able to replace five. If not, we will only replace four, or three, two, whichever.
Okay.
So I've got a question. When they are due or eligible for replacement, if they're in better shape than one that you have that is not eligible, can you keep that vehicle for a longer term, or are you obligated to take it out of service at that time?
We have to request it to become an expansion vehicle within the system, and it may or not be approved. Up until now, and it may change because of the new mileage threshold and the change, but up until now, there was no way. I mean, they were almost, we were putting them on records to get them to the surplus most of the time, because oftentimes the transmissions or something would go out, and we would take them off the road and not, to try not to have those expenses.
What are the mileage, when is it eligible to be?
The high-top conversion vans are $115,000 each, and the LTVs are $145,000. Now, after fiscal year nineteen, if I'm correct, I only think we'll have one of those high-top. The rest of them will be the LTVs that you are seeing now. And they are twenty-two foot and twenty, and the large twenty-five foot. Twenty-two, twenty-foot, I'm sorry. They hold two, two wheelchairs. We're also looking at getting total lifts now. We're not even getting any straight vans, is what we call them, because we carry so many wheelchairs.
Okay. No questions for Ms. Davidson? Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of that grant application for the 2019?
Keith Clark. 306 Village Drive, not as many squirrels. I'm lucky to be here tonight, almost wasn't, and I've actually spoken at these hearings before. It would be when I was here to explain to folks that if I give you a dollar, if you give me a dollar and a quarter back, do you remember me trying to get that through some people's heads? And I'd be here, and this would come up, and having some experience with the problems of rural North Carolina and small cities, I always thought this was a good idea. I didn't know I'd ever be using it. And I had to. And it was nice to find out that they were there and that they had the services. Particularly for me, since a lot of my services are in Pinehurst, I also had occasion in that situation to take a couple of cabs. And I would say to the city council members, they need to take a look at the safety of the people who are driving the cabs before they worry about what the county's doing with Colts. I say that in regards to, with some qualification, because one of the jobs I've been fired from in government is director of driver's license. And when I was there, we did, I will say, we did a lot to try to make that place a little less Nazi-like. I think it slapped back soon. But in the event, I got a, I got a call, and I always took the calls, and if they had another. And it was a couple, it was a man, and his mother was eighty-two years old, and she was in nursing home. And her driver's license was up for renewal. And all she'd been talking about for the last two months was she wanted to go get, she needed to, they need to get their date, what day are we going to go so I can get my driver's license? And he said, "Mr. Clark, she can't get out of bed. She's not been out of bed in a year." And so I said, "Let me see what we can do." So I did a little checking and found out that the commissioner of motor vehicles has some pork. He has complimentary driver's license. Normally, go to school, kids, but, you know, it's something that makes people happy. And so, back then, we had portable cameras, because we went from one place to the other. And so we sent one of our examiners out to that nursing home and gave that woman her driver's license. And she couldn't tell. I said, "I can't give her a valid driver's license, but I can give her something that looks like it." So they took her picture and stuck it on there, which she normally wouldn't do, and they did. And it was in doing that that I realized just how important transportation is to people. It's just really that important. And I'm glad I live in a small town. I have a strong church. But today's world, everybody works. It's kind of hard to find somebody to drive you. And one of those people, where'd he go? I thought he would stand out in the crowd.
Well, I normally do.
We've only talked once or twice in person. His name popped up on Facebook. I said, "I need a ride." He said, "I can do it." I appreciated it. And if we could record the conversations between the local head of the NCACP and Keith Clark, lifelong Republican, I'm sure we could probably sell it for a lot of money. But we enjoyed it. We really did enjoy it, and I really appreciate doing that. That's part of being in a small town. But part of being in a small town, as you begin to age, and as you find yourself, which any of us could find ourselves, just one nod, and it's one of these, one nod in the wrong place, is that we don't have, typically don't have bus service, and that public transportation is a problem. And I can tell you, from riding the buses, that system is planned to get you there on time. It is planned. I think you all know that. And, but I was glad that I had spoken for this in the past, not knowing I was going to use it. And I understand your concern about capital expenditures. You've got some big ones coming up.
Thank you.
But I'd say, thank you very much. If you need help finding the money, I'll be glad to come over and make a ten-minute presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you very much. I'm glad you've had a good experience. I'm sorry you've had to take advantage of it, but I'm glad you've had a good experience. Anyone else to speak in favor of the grant? Good evening, Mr. Finch.
Yeah. I was individual, had the opportunity to take Mr. Clark around. We truly do need to maintain public transportation. It wasn't an easy task. Not only that, but the hospital transportation back and forth for dialysis patients, it truly is needed. We should make the investment in this new equipment. And Keith really wasn't that bad. I learned a lot. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Finch.
Ms. Finch, can you state your name and address just for me?
Sure. My name is Bob Finch. I'm at fourteen fourteen Constance Street, Sanford, North Carolina. You're welcome.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Okay, I'll close this public hearing. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Davidson.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments. Ms. Keely Wood? And again, with the public comments, just a reminder, you'll state your name and address in three minutes, please, so everybody will have a chance to speak. Thanks.
Hi. Keely Wood, 363 Angel Road. I am standing before you to ask for the extension of the gas and oil drilling moratorium in Lee County. Thank you for messaging to our state legislatures. I travel the country. In fact, I leave in the morning for Texas, one of my favorite places. Do you know the population of Texas per square mile is ninety-six people, population? In North Carolina, it's about a hundred and ninety-six, and in Lee County, it's even more, at two-hundred-and-twenty-seven people per square mile. In Montana, it's six-point-eight. The population that would be impacted in Lee County is almost triple that of Texas. In Oklahoma, another state that you think of when you see in the news of fracking, there is fifty-four people per square mile. Lee County is five times that. But picture this in our county. The NC DOT reports each fracked well requires as many as 1,650 truck trips for sand and water delivery, well pad development, well drilling and extraction. Remember, 1,650 truck trips for each well. And remember this number, 650. Our MEC rules say that a well can be 650 feet next to your home. North Carolina state severance taxes are among the lowest in the country, and it's unlikely they will be raised. Most other states have shown that severance taxes aren't enough to cover road damage from fracking operations, and have to implement additional road use agreements, or called RUMAs, with industry. The DOT studied options for two years, including other states' approaches, concluding that RUMA is by far the best approachable, available approach. Unfortunately, despite RUMA and early drafts of the MEC fracking rules, this recommendation was left out of the final rules submitted to the legislator, legislators. The DOT studied Plank Road in Lee County with a bridge crossing the Deep River as a likely route for fracking trucks. This bridge alone needs 1.3 million in upgrades to handle the heavy trucks. Who's going to, who should pay for this? There are just too many negative impacts for our county. The 9,000 acres of split estates, the infrastructure, the future water issues, health impacts, social impacts, the rise in crime versus the pros of having a few prosperous landowners that usually leave the area, or they don't even live in the area, like Mr. Butler. Please visit Physicians for Social Responsibility, with over 900 reports of the reasons and the risks and the harms of fracking. I gave you a copy of the PSR for the Maryland fracking moratorium that was just approved. That is a state that has approved the moratorium. Thank you very much.
If you could send your numbers, notes, that would be great. Thank you. Mr. Keith Clark?
I was once here before to speak in behalf of concealed carry on government property. At that time, I dealt with a lot of interference. I can't think of a worse person to sell control of guns or tanks to than the individual who introduced that before you that night. I was also upset when people were talking about how this would benefit county employees because the concealed carry people were going to protect them. We're here, you're meeting, with a gun in the room. Now, you're either doing that because you want to be protected, or you want to protect the people who have to come here if they're going to address you, or both reasons. I don't know what they are. But the risks are a lot greater today, not only from internationally, but from changes in our culture, it's just what people do, just keeps getting worse. And I know that a proposal's coming to you, and I want to point out something that happened. I want to make it clear. Purpose of concealed carry is not ever to use your gun, is not often unless your life and your family's in jeopardy. That's why I strongly encourage every member of this board to go and take the course before they vote, and this is not an endorsement for any particular company. Because I think when that's understood, you'll understand what happened today, early this morning. One of the entertainers left stage, has his own bar. He actually operates a bar there in the hotel. And they were in the hotel, and they heard this noise, and then they got the call. And they got down on the floor, and they turned the lights off. And a police officer from Portland, Oregon, said, "Is there anyone in the room with concealed carry?" And the country music man raised his hand and said, "I have one, sir. I have a permit." He says, "I understand." He said, "May I borrow a ticket?" He said, "Yes, sir, you may." And he staked out the door, and he guarded that door. Now, it turns out, this incredible crime of hate, as our nation does descend into some very evil times, couldn't have been stopped. But wouldn't it be a shame if that happened in one of our buildings? And someone, an off-duty officer, like Officer Estes, who served alone a good time, and wasn't carrying, and somebody needed help, and he had it there? And so I urge you to be very, and even if it involves postponing consideration, I will feel better about it if I know each and every one of you understands what's really at stake. Thank you.
Keely said no notes, because I don't tell anything technical. I'm Debbie Hall, nine-five-seven Cumknock Road, Sanford, North Carolina, and I'm here again, first of all, to thank you for your service to our county. I had the opportunity to serve this past week as a juror, and I got my check today for $12, so I was very happy. It was an interesting experience. I only had to be there one day, so it was kind of fun. But I do thank you for what you do for our county, all the paperwork you read, everything you do to prepare for these meetings. And I'm speaking for the Cumknock community again. Most of you know that 99% of my community does not own their mineral rights, and I'm asking you to extend the moratorium on oil and gas exploration and mining. I don't believe that we know enough about fracking, and what we do know is scary. So I am asking for my neighbors, for myself, that you give us time, give yourselves time, and protect our community, but not only our community, the state. We just don't know enough about the procedures, and what we do know, as I said, is frightening. And the Bigfoot Festival is coming October the fourteenth. Last year, we expected ten people, and we had over 300. It went really well, and it's a fundraiser for Deep River Park in Ely, and we would love to invite all of you out there on the fourteenth. It's a, it's a great family-oriented festival, and we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Charles Oldham. Good evening.
Charles Oldham, and I'm from 2205 Southern Road here in Lee County. I'd like to speak with you for my three minutes, and if you've heard this before, please bear with me for that three minutes. We have heard a lot about the Marcella shale up in Pennsylvania, and we all know that it's located close to New York and close to Philadelphia, and that there are a lot of pipelines already in place in that area. But the shale in that area is very, very thin, in that it's about 300 feet possibly thick, and it takes a rocket scientist almost to do horizontal drilling in shale that's that thin. But if they could find a layer of shale up there that was 400 feet thick, they would feel like they died and gone to heaven. But here in Lee County, folks, the depth of our shale here in Lee County is a minimum, a minimum of 400 feet thick, and a lot of areas, it's 800 feet thick. So whereas the Marcella shale is much larger and much closer to at least present markets, we have a much better shale and a much thicker layer of shale here in Lee County than they have in the Marcella shale in Pennsylvania. So if we have some shale, the next question might be, well, is there any gas down there? The only producing gas well that I know of in Lee County is Butler Number Two, which is out beside 421 north of town here. And several years back, we had a pig picking out there, and we used the gas out of that well to cook the pig. Now, I have heard that people have said that there wasn't even enough gas there to cook the pig. Well, let me tell you, that is not true. The people that ran that pig picking had to step the pressure down four times in order to be able to use it in the cooker to cook that pig. That little well out there is, without any stimulation at all, is producing 90 pounds per square inch of pressure. Now, folks, that's without any stimulation, that's without any horizontal drilling, that's just a hole straight down in the ground, okay? We have got a tremendous, and let me say also that it's a relatively shallow place, too. I mean, that, that coal seam is slanted into Lee County, and it's a relatively shallow...
Time, then.
Okay, well, anyway. Let me just finish by saying this, and I hope I'm not considered to be a smart at it by saying it. But from now on, let's spell fracking right. It's F-R-A-C-I-N-G. Some dingleberry put that K in there, and I think you probably know the reason why, but anyway, let's, let's spell it right. I'm not trying to be a smart at it, saying that. And let me finish by saying this. If you think that moratorium will help, please do it, but if not, please, no.
Thank you, Ms. Oldham.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Terrica Luxton, 3616 Lee Avenue. I didn't bring a speech. I will just simply say thank you very much for bringing this moratorium back up. I have full heart in you that you will vote for it. Been telling folks for weeks on that. If anybody has any questions about the shale or the measurements of the shale, they can go to environmentallee.org, look on our fracking pages, they can find out a lot of information there. There's another link called fracfreenc.org that keeps up with everything on what's going on. And I will also say, please look carefully at the Chatham study that was done, the study that we paid for here. Look carefully at it, because one of the biggest nightmares we saw, shown to us in a map by James Womack at a compulsory polling meeting, was a map on if they decided to do fracking here vertically. And it showed, again, it is on our site, the map, and I will be glad to send you a copy of it, but it showed something in the measurement of 600 wells, I believe it was, here in Lee County, if it goes vertical. And in that Chatham County study, they did say that they are starting to do vertical fracking. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luxton. Okay. Moving on from public comments to old business, the consideration of the ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on oil and gas development and mining within Lee County, and you'll find that on page forty-four to page 121. So a lot of reading this week. We'll start with Ms. Parrish, please, ma'am.
Thank you. So, and back in December, December 7th of 2015, at that time, the Board of Commissioners adopted the temporary moratorium on oil and gas development and mining within Lee County. State law allows for the use of temporary development moratorium, 153-340H, which is also included in your agenda package. As such, the moratorium do have to include a clear statement of the problems or conditions necessitating the moratorium, this clear statement of development approval subject to the moratorium, and how addressed. subject to the moratorium, and how addressed, and then the date for termination, and a clear statement of the actions and schedules. So back in December of 2015, Lee County originally adopted the moratorium for the reason of studying the issues related to hydro oil and gas development and mining. Since then, we, the county has been working with land use consultants. At this point, I think they've mostly been working with the Joint Planning Commission. But Mr. Downey from Planning will give an update on where we stand on that. That hasn't been adopted yet, so it's taken a little bit longer to complete the land use update than we had originally expected. Further, Dr. Yule, Chatham County has a similar moratorium, we've all heard. They hired Dr. Charles Yule, and he presented a study back at this summer, I believe, maybe June or July, to the county commissioners then. And we included in the package the information, the PowerPoint slides that were presented to Chatham County with his information. We don't have the full report because Chatham County has not yet received the full report. But from my understanding is that what was in, what some of the things that he brought up in his study were things such as what water effects fracking may produce, socioeconomic impacts, and then impacts of improper disposal on air quality. And since then, now that Chatham has completed their study, his study did implicate that Lee County would also be affected by hydraulic fracturing if it were to come. So the county has now hired Dr. Yule to complete a study for Lee County, but that also will take some additional time. There are also court cases pending in Wake County, and some of those surround the legality of the rules that have been adopted at that time by the Mining and Energy Commission, which is now the Oil and Gas Commission. It's my understanding that there's a stay on the Oil and Gas Commission in which they're actually, at this point, still unable to issue permits. So there is still some uncertainty at the state level as to what the status of the Oil and Gas Commission and then also the rules that have been adopted by the previous commission. A government can extend a moratorium. It does have, it cannot last any longer than needed to address the problems. So at this point, we're suggesting just the 12-month moratorium to extend, and I believe that's also what Chatham County passed as well. So, and I believe Mr. Downey has some information to provide.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board. Yes, I'll just build on what the attorney had indicated. Just a couple of comments first. I will say, I did have the opportunity to attend the workshop that was presented in Chatham County in June. As a matter of fact, had a good working relationship with the planning director there, and he invited us up because we're sharing information as we're kind of both going through this process. And I took the opportunity to also invite Don Kavaskas because Don does a lot, as you all know, with the mapping and kind of the mineral rights separation and all that. So Don had the opportunity to attend. Just a couple of comments from observation, from a staff standpoint, about that. You have the full presentation in your packets. One thing I think that really came across to me in that is, and I'll circle back to this, is why I'm bringing this up at this time, is to talk about regionalism and kind of working together. Because one of the things that was made clear, I think, by the consultant, Dr. Yule, which you'll hear more from him on the technical side of things in, once he does the report here in Lee County, is that he reinforced the idea that kind of Lee County is the epicenter, if you will, for all of this activity. And whatever happens in Chatham is really going to be kind of most likely a result of what happens here in Lee County. So understanding that, that kind of puts even more emphasis, I think, from their standpoint of working with this body and this community and kind of working together. So how does that relate maybe to an update on the land use plan? So as you know, we are working on a county-wide update to our land use. Specifically, one of the things we asked, or tasked the consultant was to take a look at extractive uses. Because not only are we talking oil and gas, we're also talking about surface mining. If you recall, that's also included in the moratorium here in Lee County. So what we have done, working with the consultant, what we expect, and we've got the final draft now, is we're looking at identifying, from a public policy perspective, areas that are appropriate for oil and gas, from shale for that fracking use, as well as the surface mining. Areas that have the minerals and oils that we would know that these areas would be appropriate for consideration of rezoning, which would be a legislative action. So once this land use plan is adopted, what we would anticipate is we have kind of a public guide that we as staff can sit down with property owners and residents and say, these areas are appropriate for consideration of zoning. And then they would likely, again, to just keep this still in concept form, so I don't want to say this is final, but what we anticipate is that would be through an overlay zoning district. So you wouldn't change your base zoning. You would come in, and an applicant would see an area. They would say, this makes sense. It's in an area that, you know, I'm going to use the example for surface, for quarry. They would come in, they would apply for a overlay rezoning to that area. So that would be the first step in the process. The second step is updating our actual development regulations. Now, that wouldn't necessarily be accomplished through an update to the land use plan, but the first step is being accomplished in that we're setting aside the areas that we would know would be appropriate. Second part of that would then be come back and update our regulations. And this where it kind of circles back into working with Chatham County. Because what they are likely going to do, once they complete their study, they're going to go and probably outsource to a firm to develop regulations specific as it deals with shale. So there's an opportunity there that we could kind of coordinate and work together and create one set of standards for the whole industry. And it just makes a lot of sense doing it that way. And then separately, but kind of coordinating with that, we would also look at design standards for the surface mining as well. And we could do that either independently, or again, we could outsource. It depends on how you all want to give staff direction on that. And I'll pause there. There's a lot of information to throw at you, but it is. It's kind of, this land use plan really, and I should add and be clear, I think I mentioned this last meeting, but we are anticipating hopefully getting that adopted by the end of this year, first of next year. So you're only looking at a couple of months out on that.
And just to piggyback on what was stated is that in the original moratorium that was adopted, that at that time said that we would study these and then update our regulations, and they, due to the timing, just hasn't been completed yet. So that would be the reason to extend it further.
I'll pause there. If there's any questions.
Any questions or comments or concerns for the attorney, or Mr. Downey, or the manager?
If I may, I forgot to actually tell you what we need to do. If the board associates that are interested in adopting the extended moratorium, which there is a draft in there, hopefully you've had a chance to review that, is vote on whether to hold a public hearing. By statute, we do have to advertise a public hearing to consecutive weeks. So we would, we checked that we would be able to advertise this week and hold a public hearing in the second meeting in October, and have a first reading and then a second reading in November, if the board were to choose.
For the moratorium?
Because we would still have to hold a public hearing.
So we're just voting?
Whether. Whether to hold the public hearing, yes.
Marshall, a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure if I followed you. You're right, there's a lot of information at one time. But you were talking about the map overlay and identifying locations where fracking might be permitted.
Yes, so what we, based on what I've seen of the draft at this point, there are clearly areas where the shale material is specific and unique. And we've all probably seen that map 100 times, more or less. And then there's areas where the more surface-type minerals or materials are located, and those two are generally not in the same areas.
Right.
So what we're doing with the public policy portion of the land use plan is we're simply going to create a map, adopt the map as part of the plan that's going to identify these areas. And then that's going to be the platform, the basis by which when somebody wants to come in and whether they want to do shale gas or whether they wanted to do surface mining, we would use that as a referral, and that would set the steps, kind of sets that process off. So for example, if it's a strip mine, if it does fall in that area, we would say, okay, this is reasonable. You would make that request. That would be a legislative action that would go to you all as a rezoning request. Now, the next step in that, though, beyond that, would also be come up with a set of design standards that we could be as aggressive as we want it to be as a community in terms of, not only do you have to get the property rezoned, but you have to meet whether spacing standards, whatever design standards it might be necessary to where that quarry is. So not only are you having to get it rezoned, you're also then having to make sure it meets all those specific design criteria.
And that's what you're working on now?
Right. So we're working on, the plan is what we're working on now. We'll get that plan established. The next step of that will be actually come up with the design standards. Now, we have some draft in draft form, some that were actually created by some citizens here locally that would be thrown out there as a possible consideration. And then there may be opportunities, obviously. We, what I've asked staff to do is to take a look at best management practices in other places and kind of compare and see what we can come up with. But that's all a work in progress.
What about legislatively in terms of Raleigh, the way they're doing things now? Are you going to go along with that?
Well, and that goes back into what I was saying in terms of the regional cooperation. And it may be more of a question for the attorney than me. But I think at some point, you're exactly correct because our last opinion about what we have locally to be able to, for example, directly deal with oil and gas or shale fracturing, if you will, through zoning is non-existent. We don't have any authority to deal with that directly. So that would be something that the third-party consultant we talked about in terms of developing those regulations, how we process things, what we do. What I understand Chatham County is looking at is actually using a law firm to develop, to draft their regulations. It's very limited. But that's the idea, is to come up with something that, you know, for example, if you can't directly legislate, or that's not the right word, regulate, a pad, but you can regulate maybe the secondary effects. You know, there were some comments about the traffic and the storage jars.
You don't even want to say that because you're going to be working on all these things. I hate to, you have to do all the work, and all of a sudden, err.
Yeah.
It gets...
Understood. And that's absolutely, yeah, I think Whitney and I talked about that very thing, too, in terms of, part of that may not be settled yet in terms of what's happening with that.
We've been asked to participate in Chatham County's development with the attorney that they're working with.
So I think you just basically gave us justification to extend, or hold a public hearing, to extend the moratorium.
To have a public hearing to extend.
Exactly.
We have to go ahead and prepare for what we think is best for the county.
Right.
Let the legislature do what they're going to do. But we have to look out for this county.
And I personally would like to see the land use plan finished prior to...
Well, that's my only concern, is, you know, they develop something that then has to be wholly revamped all over again. I hate to waste the time.
I think we're safe with the land use plan. Because a land use plan is kind of just general. It really is simply identifying what's there.
Got you.
And it's really the policies that come up there, and how we process things and abilities. And I see the attorney nodding, so I think she agrees.
Yes, I was going to say, I don't think it would affect Mr. and the land use plan, or whatever regulations we adopt. We don't...
This just, the land use plan just takes that first step of putting that public policy out there. You as board, as our community, we say, this is where we think it's perfect for you to do these activities. And then from there, is where you get into how they go about doing those activities.
I don't think the intended is to stop anybody. It's just to say, here's what you have to do in order to do it here in Lee County, or whatever.
I'm going to throw one thing on the table for consideration. We had a 24-month moratorium to do the work that we're working on, and we didn't quite meet that deadline. And I'm looking at page 48, at the bottom of the page, on section 12-06. Our moratorium period to expand and complete the land use plan, which we've talked about, to receive the study from Dr. Yule, which I think everybody's clear on, but specifically related to Lee County, to study the impacts of oil and gas development activities and mining in other states, to develop a plan to regulate and mitigate impacts from these activities that are not addressed adequately by the state and federal regulatory programs, the existing unified development ordinance and other ordinances giving consideration to the particular natural and man-made environment of Lee County. Collaborating with Chatham, my suggestion would be that we extend the moratorium for 24 months instead of 12. So if we're running over time, again, we don't, we don't find ourselves right back here again next year doing this. Because the way I read the moratorium, if we get it finished in 12 months, we can lift the moratorium, correct?
We can lift it, because it would lift if we were able to get everything completed that we had put...
But if it takes 14 months, we're having, we'll have to do this again.
That would be correct. If we adopted it in 12 months, and we do have to, our timing does have to be reasonable in order to get everything completed, not only, you know, that's why they had, at least Chatham had looked at the 12-month extension. Because we could, after 12 months, if, based on the reports we have received at that time, extend it. I don't see anything in the statutes that indicate how, that you can't extend it so many days, or so many years, or there's no cap on it.
Right.
See, I was of the opinion at the last meeting we talked about, we were limited to 12 months.
See, but I went back and read everything and talked with the attorney and, you know, that's just where I'm coming from, is...
I don't have a problem with what you're saying. What I'm telling you is, I thought we were limited to 12 months in the last meeting. So what I'm hearing now is...
We were suggesting 12, based on the reasons.
Okay. All right, well, that's what I remember.
The Chatham County...
24 is on the table.
Well, that's what I was putting on the table tonight, just to change from 12 months to 24 months without really changing anything in the moratorium.
You can keep the target at 12, but not at 24.
Sure. Just to give us some breathing room, so we're not right back here, you know, a couple of months away from being done and having to go through all this again.
If you're going to consider 24, you need to go ahead and do it so we can advertise it as such in the public hearing.
Right. Right, that's why I brought it up tonight.
I'm moving to advance it to 24, opposed to 12.
I suggest we just keep the pedal to the metal because the state may have some other ideas.
That's fine.
You know what I mean? So, sit there and take our time.
No, absolutely. I understand that completely. But I just, I just feel like, you know, we had a really good schedule, but I know there's a lot of people out there that have heard me say this before, and we say it to each other, government wheels turn slow when you're trying to get our Joint Planning Commission together. And now we're talking about partnering with Chatham County, which I think is an excellent idea. That just is more people's schedules you're trying to get together. And we have this study coming on. I just would feel like it would give us more breathing room.
I'm fine. I've moved for the 24.
Any discussion on that? Andre, I understand where you're coming from. We definitely will work hard, for sure.
And that motion includes going ahead and doing the public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just want to be clear.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to move forward with the public hearing, but to change the time, the extension from 12 months to 24 months. Okay? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, request to appear before the board regarding bond requirements for road projects in Lee County, Mr. Kevin Combs. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Combs, excuse me, and I live at 420 Buck Road here in Sanford. And first of all, thank you very much for giving us the time to speak. I'm here to speak about the requirement for a bond for roads in the county. And first of all, let me say that I personally will not benefit from any change in this ruling or regulation. We've already done our part. We paid for our road, and it cost us much in money and time and effort. But that's the reason that I'm here. As Commissioner Reeves says, we have to look out for the county. And so that's the reason that I'd like to speak before you, the board here. The city of Sanford requires a bond for developers to develop in the city limits. As far as I understand right now, the county does not. And I bought my home. My road was not a state road, and we spent many, many hours and much, much money getting this, the road up to speed so that the state could accept it. So I am here on behalf of my neighbors to say, we think that the county should adopt a similar regulation ordinance proposal to require developers to post a bond so that any road that they put in that eventually the state takes over is up to code and that other homeowners won't go through the pain and agony that we went through to get our road put together. won't go through the pain and agony that we went through to get our road put together. Our county is growing. We've got mega sites going by. Lee County is a great place to live. I am a relative newcomer, but I think it's a great place to live. But we owe it to our citizens and to the county itself to do the best we can to make sure that when developers come in and they push in roads, that the roads are, there's a bond there to make, to make sure that the homeowners are taken care of. And I think that's about it. And I do appreciate your time.
Oh, thank you for coming.
And I'd be happy to volunteer on a transportation committee or whatever we need to do to move. I realize it costs money and it takes time, but the time and the effort and the money that we went through was just painful. And I don't want to wish, I wish that on no other citizen in our county.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Before we leave that issue, I'd like to talk to the planning director for a minute.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
By any chance, are you familiar with what the city requires and how it would impact the county if we elected to do the same thing?
Yeah, I don't believe you can. Let me tell you, try to explain why.
All right.
I believe the bond that he is referring to, the gentleman speaking about, there's, there's two types of bonds, I think, that the city captures. One that goes through planning and is for improvements that aren't finished at the time the developer wants to record their plat. There's also, I believe, a maintenance bond that they submit that is for the, like a year that's for when the street is completed and the city takes it over. It's just kind of like a construction bond. I mean, that's just a standard bond they do. That doesn't go through us at all. That goes directly through Public Works. What is the difference, though? The bond for an incomplete street, and it's also used for water and sewer, is that the city is the authority that is essentially taking over that facility. So what we're talking about are city streets, not DOT streets. So what would happen is a developer may do 100 lot subdivision. They're gonna do it in, say, three phases. They're gonna do 33 lots in each phase. What they may do is they say, we need to get these 33 lots. We got 10 of them pre-sold. It's great. We wanna get this done. We wanna get that recorded. There's a mechanism in the UDO that says, okay, the city, since the city's, city street, city water, city sewer, you give an estimate for 125% of the cost, which may be half a million dollars, maybe a million dollars, whatever that total is, and we work with our Public Works folks to get that estimate, and then they add the 25% to it. Whatever that amount is, they get a bond, usually in the form of a letter of credit or some type of performance bond. And we do hold that money. And then they have up to, I think it is two years, it's approved by city council, and they have up to two years to do that work. And it's revisited after that. And what usually happens is Public Works will keep in contact with planning staff, and we cut down, as, as pieces and parts of it are done, we reduce that bond amount until it actually gets down to zero. But the key is, it's city streets, city water, city sewer. It's not DOT. I don't believe there's any mechanism that you as the county, and this is probably more of a Whitney question than a, than a planning director question, I don't think you could collect that money for a DOT street and hold that money.
How does this protect in case the developer files bankruptcy?
Right, great point. So what, in theory, although I don't think the city, at least since I've been here, has cashed one of these in, and other cities do this as well, other places I've worked, the theory behind it, Commissioner Odom, is if they were to default, say developer went belly up, is that 125%, the city becomes basically the developer. And then typically what they would do is the Public Works Department would outsource that to a contractor to finish the work.
So as we go through and finalize the land use plan, are there any, or the UDOs, are there any things we can do as far as building subdivisions out in the county to, to address what Mr. Combs is?
We do. We already have, in my opinion. We don't allow private streets anymore.
Okay.
When we adopted the UDO in 2006, let me clarify that. We don't allow private streets in the county in residential subdivision. We do allow in some circumstances private streets, but they're typically more urban environments like alleys and some of the more neo-traditional types of developments, if that's all right, commercial. But no, one of the things we have done is we've eliminated private streets. So what's supposed to happen, of course, the developer submits a subdivision, DOT approves it in 2016, the road gets built, and it's all public. We can't control, however. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, it is kind of between the developer and DOT in terms of when they accept that for maintenance and when it gets on the state system. So I can't guarantee you 100% that, you know, it wouldn't fall through the cracks, because ultimately that's up to DOT. We don't have any say on that.
Well, we ought to have some input on it there in Lee County. So let me, Mr. Combs, do you understand what he just?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
Well, let me maybe clarify a little bit my answer, maybe that'll help. Because part of the challenge is DOT will go ahead and let them, we, we sign off on the plat and they get the lots recorded.
All right.
So those lots are sold. When that final plat is done, typically the road is in place. So we should have protection on that.
Okay.
But DOT doesn't sign off necessarily on that plat. So we don't really know at that point exactly when it gets taken over by DOT for maintenance. The road is built.
I, I got that part. So are you suggesting, or we don't have a way to have that information as a part of the process from DOT?
We do, and it, I'm gonna explain this very well. DOT has committed all along that they're gonna take this street over.
I got it. I got it.
So every indication is, this is gonna be a public street. There's no reason not to think it is. So the, the short answer to the question, I don't think that would happen in 2016 going forward, or 2017 going forward. But what I'm telling you is when we sign off and they record those lots, it's not really a local decision ultimately as to whether or not that road is taken over for maintenance by DOT. Because there's that one-year bonding and some of those things that they have to go through.
From the county perspective, though, you look at it, and there's a requirement, I think, that they basically have to state before you sign off on it, that that road will be built to meet DOT's standards.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
So that's all the planning department can do.
Well, that's, no, I, I, I'm not arguing with you, but I don't know that that's all we can do. There's obviously something else we need to do. If, if we have a situation that could be abandoned by DOT down the road, or something could change the responsibility of maintenance, then we ought to be trying to figure out what, what that cause is.
See, I think the.
I think one of the things that, you know, what, what these folks got caught in is, you know, part of the road, part of the road, part of the subdivision was built. The road was built to DOT standards. It was accepted. Then it was extended. And that part of the road was not built to DOT standards. So they bought property thinking that it was gonna be, and it never was. Could that happen again? I think it could.
No, the second part of the road was done to DOT standards.
The problem the board of county commissioners has is under the North Carolina general statutes and North Carolina administrative code. And we went down this road with the Clyde Ryan Road when we built that. The only reason we were able to build that road is because it was economic, for economic development, was part of an economic development project. We don't have authority to build residential roads. So if, let's just say, we required a bond, and all of a sudden we end up with the bond, we have no authority to take that bond and build that road. None.
Here's the catch 22, I think, is, and I've followed this through the years. If a developer builds a subdivision, he submits the plans, you approve the plans, and it shows, let's just say it shows curbing, gutter, and paving by state specifications. The state will follow that. They will let you do your own testing, but they test behind you. And when the road is through, they either say it's to their standards or not. Isn't that right?
That's right. Go ahead, yeah.
And then, in most cases, you've got to have a certain number of homes within a mile on that subdivision for them to accept it into the system.
That's exactly right. Five, I believe it is.
I think that's right. Here's the thing, some of these subdivisions may be out there five years before they have the number of homes that the state needs to accept that subdivision. In the meantime, who maintains that road? And then he starts building it again and damages the road, and therefore you got a problem. What I'm saying is the homeowners that buy upfront doesn't have any type of warranty or guarantee that that road's gonna be kept up while the developer finishes the subdivision.
It's simply, it's an offer of dedication with every plat. Same thing happens in the city. They offer for dedication, and then it has to be accepted. Now, when the city does it, for example, when they sign that plat, the Public Works Director signs it, and the council approves it, they're accepting that offer of dedication. DOT, I'm not exactly sure to be exactly how, what they do, but they, they'll, they'll accept it. I mean, that's why we go through the technical review process and they approve it. But Doc's exactly right is, there, that's what I was trying to explain, I'm not doing a very good job of, is they accept it for dedication. The developer has a contractor who builds the street to pu, to state standards, so it's a public street that they will take over, and their intent is to take it over. What kicks in is you just don't know exactly when they actually put it on the system and take it over for maintenance. So you do get in those little, however, I don't have a lack of comfort that it would be completely left off the system, maybe what's happened in this situation, as, you know, with a current project.
The developer went, went bankrupt.
Right.
Right.
And then, and so the homeowners were left holding the bag, and the state said, sure, we'll take it on, but you must do these repairs because it's this old.
Right.
And that is, that is very common, and again, when I was talking about the private streets. Every time we come across a situation where we talk to residents on private streets, DOT's answer is gonna be universally that.
The thing is, if I guess the point I was trying to make is, once the developer builds that subdivision, somehow that road is not under state protection or however you wanna say it until the state puts an SR number on it.
Yes, sir.
At that date, it becomes a state road.
Yes, sir.
It may be five years down the, it may be whatever, you know.
And, and that's the relief that we're looking for. You hit the nail on the head. It's really just, how can the, the county protect the people who live here from a situation like that whereby the developer says, I'm going somewhere else, see you bye, and the state hasn't accepted the road yet?
Let me, let me just ask this question to you. Development is created, and the first buyer comes by and talks to you about the road.
Okay.
At any point, do you have this kind of discussion explaining what could happen if you don't meet the minimum requirement for, what is it, the 500 you were just talking about?
I don't remember.
Whatever the number is.
It's 80%.
Whatever the number is. So I, I guess I'm trying to figure out if we're doing enough to at least make the public aware of what they may be walking into.
Um, I've never had that conversation. Probably what I would do is, if it specifically came up, you know, if that specific question was asked, what I would do is first order firm to DOT.
Right.
And make sure that they understood exactly that. But yeah, I mean, absolutely. I would let them know that, that there's potentially lag time until the actual maintenance of that street would come into play. Absolutely.
I think there's gotta be something that we can do on this end.
Well, they say it seems like we have to move that up and ask them to, this could be happening around the state, right? So.
Well, I, I think.
I've already been down that road with Ms. Wazinski and Buck Road. I mean, we've talked about what we can do from, how we can help them. We've basically dead in the war.
Well, that's, that's, that's in the past. And what I'm talking about is moving forward. As we move forward, we ought to be able to make people more aware of what the potential downside is.
I, I think just, two things. One, I've got the state meeting this weekend, so I will definitely bring this up with the state board because, like you said, I mean, this is happening all across the state. So in the additional agenda items, I'll add it and, and talk about it and see if maybe through the NCACC, we can make it an issue to work with DOT on. And, and then maybe, I mean, just, if, if we have builders, realtors, you know, if, if we can meet with those folks, maybe, I mean, I'll be happy to meet with them and, and just talk to them about how this is a concern, you know? We don't wanna get into have, I, I, this is Amy talking. I, I don't want us to get into a position where Mr. Downey and his office are having to say, buyer beware, you know? But at the same time, they do need the information so they don't have to go through what these folks went through.
I don't think a public service announcement that says, if you're buying in a development and you're one of the early buyers, here's some considerations you might want to give.
With a contract or something.
Right, right.
I'm just saying, put people on notice that it's not as simple as it sounds when a developer comes by and says, this is gonna be great. And five or six years later.
Well, I think you could do that too, through a warranty bond through the developer. That's just something that could be done. That warranty bond, we guaranteed that that's gonna be looked at until it's time the Department of Transportation assumes the responsibility. And I don't know that that's a really expensive way. I don't think it is according to how long that bond had to stay in place, I would think.
I think we should let the planning board take a look at it and make a recommendation back to us. We have, we have a planning board for those types of things. We should ask them to do it.
And I'll talk on the state level.
And Ms. Parrish will get to advise them.
Yes, yes, sir.
My name is Kirk Raybo. I'm at 427 Buck Road Drive. I was the actual driver to get the road turned over at this point, and Kevin was working with me. I went to the state DOT in Raleigh. I spoke to their attorneys because we actually had four people holding out on us that did not wanna pay the $3,000. We actually spent close to $80,000 on the road to get it turned over. Okay, that's how bad the road was. They sent me down to the attorney downstairs. I spoke to them, and they says, the best thing to do now is, was the state wants these private roads, even though they considered public right-of-way to get them turned over, to go to your local judicial, which I did. I went to the Lee County courthouse, okay? I sat down with the judge. She came out. She showed me exactly what had to be done. She says she just had the same situation a week prior, okay, where basically you have to sue your own homeowner, which was, I did not wanna do, but we had four people holding out. And once I had the paperwork with me, and I says, this is what's gonna happen. I'm not gonna sue you, the residents of Buck Road. Right then and there, they wrote the check because they knew the road needed to be turned over. Because the road was so bad that they actually paved, I think, close to 1,100 feet of road that had to be repaved as well as patched, you know? And I got an estimate from Kevin Rigner from the DOT that's roughly about three to four months before the road actually gets put into the system, you know? And he said, you know, like, I even spoke to his boss, and he says, Kurt, I'm not gonna lie to you. He goes, you're not the only subdivision. He goes, I'm dealing with subdivision. They're spending a half a million dollars just to get the road turned over. And it's because the developer went bankrupt.
So that's something that I think on a state level, we need to work on too.
I, I personally, I think you guys should really address that because, you know, you know, we got, when you got homeowners, the, one guy, his, his wife's got four kids. She stays home, and he works. He goes, Kurt, please, I can't afford it. Can you put me on a payment plan? So between Kevin and I, we put him on a payment plan and we laid out the money.
Okay. Sounds like you've got a good neighborhood all along.
Oh, yeah.
It's a great neighborhood, man. We, and.
And we got Joyce.
And we have Joyce. But we also don't wish our, our problems on anybody else.
Right.
And as Lee County grows, it's a great place to be. We just don't want somebody else to end up.
Getting stuck.
Going, looking through what we want.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm not putting a curtain on planning. I'm just saying that that's just information.
Right.
Information that ought to be shared in advance.
I'll, I'll also reach out to DOT and find out the question, what happens if developer goes belly up the DOT road? Because that's a, that's a legitimate question. I don't know the answer.
You're stuck. That's what I got told.
Yeah. Well, and I, I appreciate you, Mr. Combs, and, and the rest of your neighbors being here tonight. And, and you're right, Lee County's a great place to be, and I'm glad you chose to live here. And, and we're happy to have you as neighbors. And you're, you're exactly right. People shouldn't buy a home and settle in and, and then have to go through what you went through. So we'll, we'll work on making the state understand that we've got to give some protections to, to people when they choose to purchase a home in North Carolina.
I'm sure that's not the first thing they're thinking about when they purchase a home.
No, exactly. So, all right. Thank you for coming. All right, moving right along, item C, consideration of a rezoning request for 2925 Airport Road. And, okay.
Good evening. Yes, Madam Chair, as you indicated, this is. Good evening. Um, yes, Madam Chair, as you indicated, this is a recommendation for a rezoning request. You may recall at the September 18th meeting, you had a public hearing for basically 1.5 acres of land located along 2925 Airport Road. The intent was from, uh, the applicants, rather, Lloyd and Linda Kushman wanted to rezone the current residential agricultural to light industrial. Um, basically, the recommendation from the planning board, um, was in favor of the request. Um, and you can see there in your packet, you may recall last time we introduced to you the concept of two votes. Um, and we tried to put and update that form a little bit for you. So you have basically, option one is a motion that would support the recommendation for the planning board for vote number one to approve a statement on long-range plan consistency. And then option two is if you felt like the planning board was not correct, you could vote for option two, which is saying that it's inconsistent. And of course, the third option for you all is to come up with a unique motion that you felt like that was not addressed in either option one or option two. Uh, and again, just as a reminder, the second vote is one, the traditional vote that you're used to taking, which is actually to make the, uh, motion to actually rezone the property. Very similar structure. We gave you, option one is that if you earned support of the planning board's recommendation and the consistency of the plan, and you wanted to approve the rezoning from RA to light industrial. Option two mirrors that in that it's the opposite direction. And then again, option three is if you wanted to create a unique motion based on your own findings that are different than what you see there.
And make a motion to accept motion one, option one.
Okay. Any questions?
For the consistency.
Any questions or concerns from the board?
Which one did he use, motion one?
What the planning board recommended? Okay, uh, no questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
And make a motion to approve with motion one.
That would be vote number two of motion one. Probably for clarification. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Um, so this is the second motion to approve the recommendation. All those in favor say aye, aye opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Item D, under all business is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sundays. Ms. Parrish?
Um, there's actually in your, underneath your agenda, there was printed out a new app check for this, um, item. Um, um, as we had said, the general assembly had enacted a single 135, allowing, um, local governments to adopt an ordinance to allow the sale of all beverages. Mixed beverages beginning at 10 a.m. on Sunday, uh, because they want to do their licenses. Um, at the August 21st Board of Commissioner meetings, they voted, you voted on supporting a public hearing on the proposed ordinance. And at the September 18th meeting, uh, a public hearing was held in which no one spoke in favor or against, um, the ordinance. And it was on at that time for a fresh reading, but we didn't take a vote on that. So it is now on for a first reading with a vote. It will be back on the next agenda meeting for the second reading and final vote.
Do you need to read it?
I can read it. Says, um, ordinance allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages beginning at 10 a.m. on Sunday within the county of Lee, whereas pursuant to session law 2017-87, North Carolina General Statute 153A, 145.7, authorize cities and county governments to adopt an ordinance allowing for the sale of malt beverages, unfortified wine, fortified wine, and mixed beverages beginning at 10 a.m. on Sunday pursuant to the license premises of ABC's permit issued under North Carolina General Statute 18B dash 1001. Whereas restaurants and other retail establishments within the county of Lee may desire to sell malt beverages, unfortified wine, fortified wine, and mixed beverages beginning at 10 a.m. on Sunday to meet the needs of its customers. Now therefore be ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County pursuant to law 2017-87. Within Lee County, the sale of malt beverages, unfortified wine, fortified wine, and mixed beverages is hereby allowed beginning at 10 a.m. on Sunday pursuant to the license purposes of ABC permit issued under General Statute 18B dash 1001. Section two is all laws in conflict here with or hereby replaced to extent of any conflict. And section three is the ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of adoption.
Okay.
So moved.
Very much. Okay, okay. All those in favor say aye, aye opposed? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know y'all drink too.
Okay. Uh, the request for approval of an incentive agreement with Coremark International LLC. Ms. Parrish?
I can start. Mr. Joyce is here if you have any further questions or, uh, don't explain this as well. On January 4th of 2016, at that time, the board held a public hearing on Project Core, which was Coremark International, for a possible incentive. The term of the agreement was for five years. The county investing up to 26,345 dollars and 25 cents. Um, with the company agreeing to create 25 new jobs at average annual wage of $31,800 and at least 1,500, no, 1,500,000 in taxable investments. Um, the board then approved incentive after the public hearing. On January 19th, the board approved the attached incentive agreement. Um, so it's in the packet. And Mr. Joyce may give a plan a little better, but my understanding is that the, um, company was working with a consultant maybe out without a DC somewhere else. Um, and they were also applying for a NC one grant. Um, at that time, they decided not to get the NC one grant and I think this one just fell through the cracks. And so they have reached back out and I think they would like to, um, move forward with the agreement. And we have already held a public hearing on, on those three, and it hasn't voted, but we've got it. It'd be best to bring it back up.
Any questions or comments?
They're in compliance now?
Um, the questions, are they in compliance now? I, I, I think that proof is forthcoming.
Yes.
It just.
The answer is, we still have to verify jobs.
Right, just, just like other incentives, yeah.
The answer is, I do, I do not know tonight if they have spent 1.5 million and hired 25 people. But before we have, before we pay any incentive, we will verify that they have hired 25 people and invested 1.5.
I know that lady back there will make sure.
Yes, yes.
I would say I'd make a motion to accept this agreement once they provide the proof of the jobs and the tax investment.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. New business, uh, budget amendment. Ms. Parrish?
Good evening. We have before you budget amendment number three for this fiscal year. This budget amendment is appropriating, excuse me, appropriating $3,865 in ship, um, grant funds to use, to be used for travel, advertising, program supplies, and bringing expenses for the ship program.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye, aye opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, it's not on my agenda, but man, it's a report.
Uh, the only thing I need to announce is that the new community and government relations director, who will be starting at the end of the month, is here. Jamie Brown is
Welcome, Jamie.
here at the corner. So, um, we have made a hire there and, um, as soon as she works her notice with the city of Raleigh, she'll be starting here.
Welcome. Good to have you. Thank you. Okay, commissioners' comments? So, Mr. Dodson?
Um, just thank you everyone for, uh, coming out tonight and, uh, obviously looking for, uh, the victims and the victims' families out in, uh, Robben on, uh, thoughts and prayers. I'm sure the death goal, uh, it appears it keeps going higher.
Sorry that I was late this evening. See, all handled. Um, and, uh,
Just prayers for the victims, uh, families in Las Vegas and, uh, I got an alien father. If they're willing to pray for him, I appreciate it. And, uh, that's about all we got.
Mr.?
Convey the same center and his other commissioners to the victims and the families. And then also, uh, received a phone call from, uh, Charles Taylor, the city councilman, after our last meeting and the comments that were made. And, um, he feels that, you know, his comments were taken out of text regarding cults. So he wanted to convey that to the citizens of the county and, um, we had a really good discussion and, um, so I told him I would be glad to do so. I think that he, uh, you know, was trying to propose, my understanding, cults as a possible solution to a problem that the city had. And, uh, you know, I respect, um, his intent. And so, thank you everyone for coming and, uh, that's it for me.
Tom?
Well, my heart and prayers go out to folks in Las Vegas. And, you know, I, sometimes I wonder where they're headed, you know? Things like that happen. I will say this too. I see, I think I see an improvement in the trash in the county.
You just moved over to my side.
Yeah.
There you go.
Starting to see it more down towards property.
All I can say is, I, 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 I will say it like this. On Steel Bridge Road, I see an improvement, I think. Maybe because I pick up a lot of trash. I don't know.
And take it down to his area.
And take it down.
Well, keep advocating, Doc. It's a good thing.
Just keep reminding folks it's trash cans. That's where trash comes.
That's right.
Well, I think I certainly concur with the rest of the board about Las Vegas, Puerto Rico, Florida, Texas. It's just a sad time. The other thing I will mention is I heard one of the public speakers make comment regarding concealed carry. And Madam Chair, members of the board, I've asked that we have a council give us an overview what the rules are. Before we take up the issue, let's find out exactly where we are in terms of compliance with the state law. Obviously, the general assembly, at least in this one case, obviously saw a need to allow local government to have some control over the buildings and properties. So let's get that on my council. Whenever you schedule this file, thank you.
Um, a couple of, uh, quick things. Um, I know everybody's kind of in a somber mood after everything that's been going on. And I, I do always try to look for a little bit of, um, good. Heard one person on the news today say, you know, there was one really evil, terrible person, um, that did something awful. But there were hundreds of people that did really great things last night and we need to keep that in mind. Um, we've, we've got some serious issues, um, kind of like Doc. Sometimes I wonder where we're headed. But we have things like the hurricanes in two of our states and, um, one of our territories. And then we have this violent tragedy last night and we see the better part of humankind in, in really, really stressful, serious, um, horrific, uh, conditions. And, um, I know we have law enforcement folks here on our board. And, um, I'm so grateful to them and our first responders that when other people are running away to seek cover, they're running into the fire, um, and, and into danger. So, um, we need to thank them, buy them dinner, give them a hug, whatever, um, because we take them for granted every day. Um, but, but they're there to give the ultimate sacrifice when necessary. And we do need to keep that in mind. And I'm a first responder over here too. So, um, we're very blessed to have those kinds of folks. And, and I think this country still, um, when it gets right down to it, I think we care about each other no matter what our background is. And we're willing to do what we have to, to protect each other when, when things get tough. So we need to kind of keep that mindset, I think, every day. We're all in this together. On a lighter note, um, I was really tickled when I got my agenda that, um, I, I got 56 thank you notes. And because the time, I won't read them all. I know Mr. Reeves would, but the third or fourth one would say something. But but 56 thank you notes from people that, um, utilize our enrichment center. They had an advocacy day in September. And, I mean, some of them even stapled extra pages, you know, and they're great notes. Um, just, just telling us how important the enrichment center is to them. Um, some folks that are new to the community that go and they've met friends there. And, and others that are, um, you know, have lost their spouse. And it's just their way of be, having, um, social time and becoming an extension of their family, you know? Exercise and they go on trips and, yeah, it, it, the notes were great. So that was a good thing. And I will get, uh, another thing, if you, if you're interested, and we're coming up on the deadline. Um, if you would like to serve on an NCACC committee, agriculture, education, environment, general government, there's, there's lots of committees to choose from. But the deadline to apply is October 6th. So if you go on the NCACC website, if you're interested in doing something like that, um, please get your application in by, um, Friday. And also, um, our county, our members need to fill out the questionnaire from NCACC by October 20th, kind of giving your biography information. We're trying to put together a more comprehensive, um, compilation of all, all the commissioners in the state. So, um, October 6th, if you want to be on a committee, October 20th, please have your questionnaire filled out from the association. And lastly, I will be in trouble if I don't say this. Tomorrow, starting at 4:30 for JV, is the Big Dick Pink Game at Lee County High School. But it is the fundraiser that the girls volleyball teams from Lee County High School and Southern Lee, they come together and, uh, JV starts at 4:30, varsity at 5:30. And all the, the gate and popcorn sales and everything go to the Kyal Breast Cancer Fund. So it's a great event, um, for those of you that are interested in that. Um, we have a big time. So with that, um, we have two more things quickly. The closed session minutes and I'll really need three motions. The minutes from August 21st, 2017, closed session meeting. Is there, um, a motion to approve those minutes? Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed? Okay, the minutes from the September 18th, 2017, closed session meeting? Okay, all those in favor say aye, aye opposed? And the closed session to discuss, oh, I'm sorry. We have to have that. I'm on a roll. Go ahead.
Go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute, section 143 dash 318, dot 11, A5, to discuss the acquisition of real property.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you. Okay, we're in closed session, thank you.